I'd like to welcome everyone to our Carter County Board of Commissioners meeting, March 18th, 2024. Like to ask Commissioner Mansfield to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a minute to have Commissioner Chadwick say a few words about.
We lost a longtime public service servant this week, Mr. Dave Fowler. He was a former county commissioner and town councilman and Cape Carteret and mayor of Cape Carteret and very active in the Republican Party, president of the Carter County Republican Party. And so I'd like for everybody to be in keep Dave and Ms. Wanda your thoughts and prayers. We're having the service up in Kellaway in North Carolina, and then later we're gonna have something here in Carter County. But I wanted to mention about him. He really led a life of public service to whatever community he lived in. Keep him in your thoughts and prayers.
All right, thank you. And we'd like to ask Pastor Steve Stevenson of Atlantic Missionary Baptist Church to give us the invocation.
Thank you. If you would, please bow with me as we go to God in prayer. Precious Lord God and Father, we come to you in the precious and loving name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And as we come together this evening, Lord, I want to express my gratitude and my thanks for for the beauty of this county in which we lived. As a recent member of this community, God, I have certainly been blessed to see so many wonderful things. And Father, we know from one end of the county to the other, for those of us who live here, for those of us who, for those who visit, Lord, we enjoy the banks, we enjoy the sound. Father, we enjoy and blessed to see the marshes and the beautiful beaches of our county on a day-to-day basis. And Father, I thank you. I thank you also for the wonderful people that I've met, the people who call Carteret County home, and for those of whom you have raised up from among us to represent us and lead us. Father, bless these men and this council. Father, they give sacrificially of their time and their talent to service, to serve us, and bless too their families who support them and allow them to serve. Father, in times such as these, I ask, dear God, that you would bless these men with the wisdom and courage from on high, the wisdom and courage to make decisions that will ultimately impact all who live here and all who visit here from time to time. Bless each one, dear Lord, I pray, in the name of Jesus Christ, whose resurrection we will celebrate here shortly in just a couple of weeks. We thank you, dear Savior, who are Savior and our Lord Jesus Christ. We thank you, Father, for this time together, and we ask God that you would be glorified in all that is said and done this evening. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to ask everyone to please mute your devices or shut them off. And in accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before this board this evening? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any undue participation in the particular matter involved.
I'm good.
And I'll ask for an adoption of the agenda.
There's no amendments. I motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Chadwick. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Asked to approve the consent agenda.
I move.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's approved. And now we're in public comments. We only have one speaker tonight, and that is Brian Nicolau.
Good evening, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brian Nicolau. I'm at 1502 Salter Path Road. Tonight I come to you asking on one action item, two information items, and one announcement. The action item I'm requesting of the Board of Commissioners is to pass a resolution to ban the voting machines. I ask you because there are security vulnerabilities with these machines, there are high costs of purchasing, there's administration, significant administrative and logistical challenge with these machines. They're confusing, lack of transparency. We have a third party who has unconstitutional control of our citizens voting, and they're unaccountable to the citizens. Secondly, I ask that the awareness items is that we do in this country have political hostages. Our J sixers are being persecuted and unfairly detained in prisons. You'll see everything you want to know about the Murdoch trials on every media outlet you want to see, but you won't hear anything about what's going on with our J sixers. Also, I want to bring to your attention that we have a massive human trafficking problem. A lot of it brought about by our open borders policy. Women and children are being sent to unvetted sponsors and then lost. Eighty-five thousand women and children are unaccounted for. Finally, this is kind of a last-minute announcement, but I want to bring this on behalf of Carteret County Votes Count. They're having a guest speaker by the name of Mr. David Clements. And this individual was a number-one law professor in the University of New Mexico. And the title of this is called Let My People Go. And this is, it'll be him, public speaker, and then a movie called Regarding Election Research. The location is to be determined. That'll be presented to all the Commissioners. And when is Monday, March 25th at 7:00 PM? So please mark that date in your calendars. I implore you, if you can attend, it'll be educational and worthwhile for you to see what's going on from another perspective. It can be seen, this movie can be seen on Rumble. You can search, go on Rumble and type in Let My People Go, and it's free right now. It's being suppressed on other platforms, but you can see it on Rumble. The other, I guess I'll finish up with this. My challenge is, I'm not passing judgment, but I'm kind of, I'm asking where the churches these days? Where, you don't have to be political, because I know your 501(c)(3) are in jeopardy to come out and speak, but you can take positions publicly, and we're just not seeing it right now. In this time in history, we need to be, we need to come together. We've been divided on everything from race, religion, to status. It's time for us to come together. They want us to be divided. What you can do locally, when I was in Marine Corps, we used what we called chain of command. That's why I'm here talking. You asking, what can we do about national issues here? I'm coming to you. If you can, if you believe what I say, or you don't have to believe, I'm asking you to do your own research. If you find what I'm saying has any speck of truth, then forward it up line, go to your state, and then the state to the, to our Congress where we can see action. So with that, I thank you for your time and have a good evening.
All right, item number six is recognition of the January, February, and March Jamie Hicks Long Employee of the Month Award. Have Nick Wilson.
Good evening, Commissioners and residents. Tonight we're here to celebrate the outstanding contributions of three exceptional team members who have been recognized as the Jamie Hicks Long Employees of the Month for January, February, and March of this year. So first up we have Sandy Martin. As a dedicated telecommunicator at the 901 Communication Center, Sandy plays a vital role in keeping our community safe. Every call, emergency or not emergency, finds Sandy at the front line answering with empathy and efficiency. Her dedication to dispatching law enforcement, fire, and EMS personnel with precision and speed has improved officer safety and response times. Even beyond her schedule shifts, Sandy's commitment shines. She readily steps up when colleagues need time off, ensuring the 911 center operates seamlessly. Her calm demeanor and professionalism are a beacon of stressful situations, providing support to callers during emergencies. While she may not arrive with flashing lights, Sandy is a true behind-the-scenes hero, making sure every call gets the help attention it deserves. Sandy has dedicated over 26 years to public service, consistently setting a high bar with her expertise and commitment. So this time, congratulations, Sandy. She couldn't be here tonight. She actually retired in middle of February, but we want to thank her for all her service in her 26 years. So thank you for that. All right, and we're moving along to February is Heather Daigle, our Human Resources Director. Heather officially began her service to Carteret County in 2022, when she was hired as the Assistant Human Resources Director, and promoted in 2023 to Director. In this role, she is responsible for overseeing all resource operations and ensuring compliance across all county departments. Heather's impact goes beyond the typical duties. She's introduced a paperless system for pre-employment screenings that move that streamline procedures, reduce costs, and enhance the overall efficiency of the department. This forward-thinking approach has improved workflows and serves as an example to her continuous pursuit of improvements. Her colleagues praise her for demonstrating respect and professionalism. Her warm and approachable nature creates a positive work environment where everyone feels valued and supported. In the face of unimaginable adversity last year, Heather's leadership truly shone. Following the tragic loss of our beloved leader and friend, Jamie Long, she stepped up with compassion and strength. Heather not only brought the HR team together, but also served as a pillar of support for the entire CCG family. She established regular team meetings, offered grief counseling resources, and fosters a supportive environment. Her all-hands-on-deck attitude and commitment to excellence were instrumental in navigating this difficult time, laying the foundation for the department's continued success. We are incredibly grateful to have her on our team. Thank you, and congratulations, Heather. All right, and lastly, we have March. We honor Jenny Beeman, Administrative Assistant for the Public Works Department. Jenny's impact on our Public Works Department has been immediate and impressive. She brings a wealth of experience and the talent for creative solutions that have already improved our daily operations. Jenny seamlessly adapted to our team despite challenging circumstances, demonstrating remarkable reliability, punctuality, and a genuine eagerness to learn, all with a smile. A true team player, Jenny's commitment extends beyond the office. She took the initiative last year to obtain a North Carolina pesticide license, directly supporting our county's mosquito control efforts. She fosters positive working relationships across all departments, consistently courteous to colleagues and the public alike. Described by her peers as easy to work with, a problem solver, and a hard worker who consistently goes above and beyond, Jenny is a true asset to Carteret County. Congratulations, Jenny. We appreciate all that you do. So at this time, I hope you come out, and you guys can come up, and we'll get a quick picture.
All right, item number seven is the Boys and Girls Club presentation of the Beaufort School property lease. Mr. Neil Whitford.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I am Neil Whitford. I'm the Carteret County School Attorney. Twenty years ago, the Boys and Girls Club, the Board of Education, and the Board of County Commissioners collaborated on a project to build a multipurpose building on the Morehead City Elementary School campus at Camp Glenn. That has been an overwhelming success. Tonight, we come before you with a similar proposal for the Beaufort Elementary, Beaufort Middle School campus. And it's not precisely the same, but it is very close. And there's a lease in your packet that is based on what we did 20 years ago for Camp Glenn, and we just updated it to meet the current requirements. And so at the end of the presentation tonight, we would be asking that you approve that lease. It then goes to the Board of Education. All this is according to a special bill that was passed by the General Assembly in October, and it requires both the school board and the county commissioners to get together to approve these types of arrangements. And so with that, I'll introduce the School Superintendent, Richard Paylor. He'll give you a little more background, and then he'll introduce the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club.
Good evening. So just speaking of the partnership we have to Boys and Girls Club, they serve hundreds of kids every day. Some of our more challenging kids and economically disadvantaged kids. We have a great partnership with them. We have for years, as Mr. Whitford said, going back to 2002. So this is something that we have been working on, this project that you'll hear about tonight. We've actually, when I met with Mark about a year ago, is when we started getting serious about it, but we've been talking about this for years. So it's a project that we think is going to be very beneficial to our Beaufort kids. As Neil said, a special bill was passed last year to allow this to happen, so we're excited. So I'm going to turn it over to the CEO of the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Coastal Plain, Mr. Mark Holtzman.
Thank you, Mr. Paylor, and thank you, Mr. Whitford, for getting us to this stage. We're excited. My name is Mark Holtzman. I'm the CEO for the Boys and Girls Club of the Coastal Plain. We represent seven different counties in eastern North Carolina, none more important tonight than Carteret County. And we're excited to be bringing this project here. It's been a long time coming, a lot of conversation about it, and one of those people that's been with us really from the beginning in that last club that was built at Morehead is my board member, Karen Willis. She's here today. She was instrumental in making that one happen, and she's back here again. So there's no doubt that this is going to happen for our club and for our kids in our community. I have a couple slides to walk you through, and we'll take you out to the site and show you kind of what we're looking at. So our goals for this club really are that second one. We want to really double the amount of kids that we're serving at our current clubs for the Beaufort community by building a standalone club and expanding our partnership again with the Carteret County Commissioners and the school board. Boys and Girls Club is all about programming, tutoring, after-school tutoring, obviously some activity around sports and youth, but we're all about our outcomes and supporting the families and the community. That's really our heart and soul, what we do while we get up in the mornings. Current locations for Beaufort, we're at two different locations, and our goal was to combine these into one standalone club. There's a picture here of our Beaufort Teen Center on Mulberry Street. It's currently, our numbers are down there a bit. We're serving about 15 kids daily, serving about 20 kids in a week. And then below that is the Beaufort Elementary School, a little stronger program, seeing at least 50 kids a day, about 60 kids in a week. So in a given week, we're seeing about 80 kids, and we're hoping to at least double that in our new club. And I think you'll see why. We mentioned our current partnership. This has been done. Mr. Whitford spoke about it. This is our Sunshine Lady Club. This is our Morehead City Club on the Camp Glenn Campus, and it is, it's currently serving just around 100 members at that club. I just came from that club this afternoon. Ava Bryant is there. She's our club director and just a pleasant lady, and she's gearing up for summer already. So piggybacking on that, we began to talk to the school board again. Could not have had a more welcome than I got from Mr. Paylor and the schools about the prospect of doing this club. So we're showing here a campus of the Beaufort Elementary and Middle School, and it's Highway 70 up at the top. That little blue box is the proposed site, and the red box is about a five-acre site around the back end of that campus. So as our architect said, there is no bad side on this building. It's going to be viewable from all directions, from the walkable community up to the right-hand corner, to the kids coming out the back of the school. We need to make that attractive, and we want to catch everybody's eye coming by on the street to let them know that we are in this community and supporting it. Here's a more close-in picture. What you see, there's a ball field on the left-hand side, and the club is about a 20,000-square-foot club. It's a bit larger than the one at the Sunshine Lady Club that we currently have. You can see a basketball court on the inside of that club, but really, everything to the right-hand side, that all-white area, is going to be where the youth programs are, six through 12. And then on the left-hand side, right in front of that basketball court, that white area is the dedicated teen club that will be inside this club. So I'll show a little bit more close-up of that in a second. But it will have access off a camping road, and that driveway lines up with the driveway across the street. And then one final, a little bit more zoomed in. So this is just a little bit zoomed. The orientation has switched on you a little bit. Gymnasium is in the lighter area. You'll enter from the right-hand side, coming in, sort of in the middle. The blue area, you're going to, if you've been inside our Sunshine Lady Club, the first thing you walk in and see are the games, games tables, drawed in. So we replicated that again here. When you walk in, you will see game tables. All the classroom instructional areas for the younger kids will be on the right-hand side. The purple area here is going to be our dedicated teen club. We know that growing strong teens, teens have a lot of choices after school, and having them someplace that they can call their own, we know from our experience in Boys and Girls Club that that is what keeps them, keeps them kind of hooked in. We're really hoping with the position, the location of this club at the campus there and across the street from all those wonderful homes that were built there, that we'll get some walkable teens that will want to come and walk back over to the club and be there. Our timeline, I think, is pretty fair and pretty aggressive. With the approval of a ground lease here in March, we can get moving with our capital campaign, which is already quietly underway. The, we're in facility design, which got us to our floor plans, what you saw here today. My goal is to award the bid by the end of the year, and that puts a lot of pressure on our fundraising team to get out there and make those dollars happen. I'd love to break ground in '25 and open that club up in '26. So that's our goal. And all that starts with a partnership with the county commissioners and the Board of Education to do a 30-year ground lease at that property to allow us the opportunity to make this happen. Any questions?
Got a couple. What's going to happen to the facility at Camp Glenn?
It'll remain open, sir. Great, great question. I didn't cover that. That facility will remain open and continue to serve the community in Morehead. What we're going to do is we're going to combine the older teen center there that I showed you a picture of and the elementary school at Beaufort Elementary. Those two will come together in the backyard of that campus. So Morehead will stay open. So we'll have two dedicated facilities in Carteret when we're all done.
Okay. How do you, you say you want to double the participation rate? How do you plan on doing that?
You know, I spoke with Ms. Bryant, who runs our Morehead Club, and she said in the past, she had had close to 100 kids every day just at the Beaufort Elementary School when she was running that site. So I can only imagine that when we put this club in the backyard of the elementary and the middle school, our six-through-12 population is going to be fairly strong. We will have to work on our teens. Our teens, those 20 teens, will be moving over to this location, and then growing that teen population is just going to have to be a bit organically, I think. A lot of times, it's easier to move, to kind of hang on to them as they come up, 11, 12, they turn 13, 14, they've been in the club. Now they get to go into the exciting part of the club for them, the teen center, and so kind of hope to build it through that way, and it shouldn't take very long.
Are you going to add more programs and more different things to draw more people?
Well, great question. Yes, it's going to take additional staff, and there'll be additional programming here. And one of the programs we'd love to bring to the community real soon is a Club Academy. It's a special tutoring program for third and fourth-grade kids that we've been able to do in some other clubs. It's expensive, but it's a partnership again with the schools where we tutor the kids real, in close proximity with the teachers and then also at the club. So really working on the third and fourth graders to learn to read and then read to learn and learn math. So that's one specific program that we already have 50% sponsor for to launch in this new club.
How many additional staff members are you going to have to add?
Well, we would have to double what we currently have. So I would say we're probably, we run a ratio of no more than one to 20 to a staff member to youth. So you're probably, we're probably estimating, I would say, five to six additional staff.
What are their qualifications?
Well, your entry level can be an 18-year-old, you know, recent graduate. Could be a lot of college students come in. Honestly, we, I love hiring the people that have just recently retired and coming back and serving in the club in the afternoon. So we do have positions actually available now. I'll take that opportunity to do a pitch for our Morehead Club. We do, we do need some extra staff in our Morehead Club just for that reason. We're gearing up for summer, and we're, that club is currently at 60, and she'd love to get much higher than that. She needs about two or three more staff just for her summer program. So we're always looking to hire. We do pay $15 an hour now. That's up.
How much?
$15 an hour for entry level for our youth development professionals, which I think is fairly competitive. That was up from a lot lower just a few years ago. So it takes, it takes a lot of support from the community and our sponsors to make that happen.
Are you going to be looking more for chaperone or professional people?
Well, by way of chaperone, volunteers, you're thinking?
Yes, sir. You said 18-year-old.
Yeah. That ratio can come from either a paid staff or a trained volunteer. So we can take both. So if we have maybe a volunteer in a community that wants to come and serve a couple days a week, and, you know, they'll get that same basic training that our youth development professionals get, and they count towards that ratio. So it could be two or three paid positions, two or three volunteers that are committed to come into the club. So that seems to be the two types of staff that we gain. The early, early in their career and recently retired out of another career are ready to give back and serve in the community.
Reason I was asking you, oh, the interest that it has, will be more of a job? Is it going to bring about more of a job increase in the community, provide more jobs and that kind of thing? That's more or less what I was thinking about.
Great question. So this club will have, it'll have two full-time staff members. We have one full-time staff member serving the teen center and a part-time one serving the elementary school. So it will increase that to a second full-time position, and if we can get the Club Academy position going, that'll be a third full-time position. And then the rest will be part-time positions.
Do you do background checks on all the people that are going to be associated with these children?
Absolutely, yeah. Background and fingerprinted for every single person that's coming in our doors.
What would disqualify somebody on a background check? Violence, child molestation?
Really, and, yeah, any of that stuff, any of the obvious things, but also any assault on female, anything like that. We look for assaults, we look for any kind of interaction with you.
Anger management. Okay. Is there a cost per kid to go to the Boys and Girls Club?
There is. It's a minimal cost. So it costs us between $5,000 and $6,000 a year to operate per child, and our current rate is $50 for an dollars a year to operate per child, and our current rate is fifty dollars for an academic year. That will be going up next year. And then, currently, our summer program, which is just opening up to the public, is, is two hundred dollars, but it's about twenty-five dollars a week for the whole summer. So it's a two hundred dollars for an eight-week program. And we have a, we have, our motto is, no, no child gets turned away for economic reasons. So if they can't make it, we scholarship them in. I just talked with Ava. She's scholarships them in already. But, so we work with every parent.
How, how big a deal is it to, to get that scholarship? I never knew, you just said that there was a fee for going to the Boys and Girls Club. I never knew that.
There is a fee, but I, on average, across our organization, about thirty percent of the kids pay nothing. So it just depends what their status is, and they just work with the club directors. We don't charge for teens, just to kind of re-release, remove one more barrier for a teen member coming. But oftentimes, parents are looking for that after-school care. We can provide that, but also provide a lot of programming, support, education, fun, food. We feed them every single day. They come into the club, they're eating dinner. So, and again, the, the fees there is really to get, to get some buy-in from the parents, and, and so they don't just sort of lock up a position, say, my kid's going to come, and then they just never show up. If they're paying a little bit, we see attendance go up. We know that if a, a small child is there at least three days a week, that's much more successful outcomes than if they just show up once or twice. So we try to get them at least three, four, five days a week coming to the club, and that little bit of payment from a parent, we, we see that as good buy-in. And again, i-if they can't afford it, we just let them in.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the lease to the Boys and Girls Club of Coastal Plains for approximately five point two acres of vacant land at Beaufort Middle and Beaufort Elementary School campus.
Second it.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. I do have one question. The, the Boys and Girls Club of Morehead is going to be smaller than this club. Do you have room for expansion for the Morehead? Do you have more, more land there to expand on in Morehead? Or is it, or are you?
To expand the building?
Yeah. You said that one's smaller than, than this one's going to be, right?
It is. It is smaller, yes.
Could be taking up playgrounds.
We'd be taking up some playground space there, yeah.
And I'd be remiss to ask, have you guys ever looked at the western end of the county for, for putting anything like that down at, at, at the western end of the county?
Can't get ahead of me. I'm trying to get one down the corner.
Karen warned me. I was warned.
I had to ask that. I only have eight months left.
Yes, yes. I, I believe there have been some discussions, and I believe with, with the, with the, with the financial support in this room, that could all be hap, that could happen.
Well, and I will say, one other thing, too. You do a great job with your financial support. The fishing tournament and all of the things you do, and, and we commend you for that. So thank you, sir. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Thank you all for your support. I appreciate it.
All right. Item number eight is a public hearing to rezone a two-point-four-one acre parcel located at eight-six-nine Hibbs Road, Newport, from R-15M Single Family Residential District to B-1CZ General Business Conditional Zoning District. Mr. Foxworth?
Yes, sir. I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. And as you just said, this is a conditional rezoning request. So currently, this parcel is vacant. It's bordered by the Humane Society on one side, and a landscaping business on the other. Across the road, there's some single-family dwellings, and then green recycling solutions as well. Subject property is bordered by R-15M and B-1 zoning to the north, R-15M zoning to the east and south, R-20, B-1CZ, and IWCU zoning to the west across Hibbs Road. So this conditional request, the uses that they've asked for are accessory use in our building, storage yard, boats, storage units, mini warehouses, mini storage, contractor's office, contractor plant and/or storage yard, and boat storage yard. So this parcel is in the limited transition district, and is consistent with our Camel Land Use Plan. In February, the planning commission heard this request, and unanimously eight to zero voted to recommend approval. One interesting thing about this parcel, it is served by a thirty-foot access easement that runs across the, the neighboring property, and they received a variance to our subdivision ordinance here about a year ago to be able to use that thirty-foot access easement, which they got out ahead of it on that, which a thirty-foot is typically fifty to access a property like this.
Can you point that out on the map behind you?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. So that access easement runs right here, down the side of that yard right there. It's also mapped on our GIS. If you pull it up on there.
We're just in relation, we've done a lot of rezoning in that area, Hibbs Road, place across the street.
Right here. Are those parcels that were combined? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. If you remember, we combined several parcels there. And there's the Humane Society right here.
Any utilities running on your easement?
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
Any people object to it?
No, sir. We had two no objections. I think we notified twenty-two, I mean, it was twenty-two property owners notified. There were zero objections and two no objections.
So no access off of the road going to the animal shelter?
No, sir.
Yeah, it's pretty narrow.
Yes, sir. And there wasn't existing access easement for this property. Otherwise, it would be landlocked without that. Yes, sir.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, motion to go into public hearing?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion to go into public hearing. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Is there anyone here to speak about this matter tonight?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor of going out of public hearing, please raise your right hand. We're now out of public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'm motion to approve the rezoning of the two-point-four-one acre parcel located at eight-sixty-nine Hibbs Road, Newport, from R-15M Single Family Residential to a B-1CZ General Business Conditional Zoning District.
Second.
Got a first and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. No one's opposed. That's unanimous. Any other actions that you need to take?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that this plan is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of our Camel Land Use Plan, and consistent with the other properties located along the Hibbs Road extension and Hibbs Road.
All right. Can I get a second on that?
Second it.
All those in favor of the consistency, please raise your right hand. That's unanimous?
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Thank you, sir. Our next item, number nine, is Carteret County Radio System Project Vendor Discussion. Mr. Stephen Ray?
Good evening. Here to discuss the radio system project for Carteret County. Carteret County Emergency Services, working with the radio consultant, Federal Engineering, posted an RFP for the new radio system on October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three. We had a mandatory meeting of the vendors on November first of twenty-twenty-three, and tower site visits for the vendors were completed that same day. We requested the vendors to send questions to Carteret County. After receiving the questions, we answered all the questions and extended the due date for proposals to January tenth of twenty-twenty-four at three P.M., where we did a public bid opening. After the bid opening, it was determined that two, two vendors, Communications International and JVC Kenwood, completed the RFP processes and were accepted to move to the scoring process. One vendor, Motorola, did not follow the RFP process and was eliminated from the process. The scoring committee was formed of individuals due to their expertise in the RFP format, technical experience, and not having bias to any vendors. After several meetings with the scoring committee, the following scores were finalized. Communications International total score was seventy-two point oh-eight. JVC Kenwood total score was seventy-six point six-seven. These scores were comprised of technical review equaling seventy-five percent of the scoring, and pricing equaling twenty-five percent of the scoring. Carteret County Emergency Services would like to recommend JVC Kenwood as the choice to move forward with the radio system project. We would also ask to allow contract negotiations to begin with JVC Kenwood and Carteret County representatives, along with the consultants from Federal Engineering. Any questions?
Did you say there were two people submitted proposals, and one was rejected?
There was three that submitted. Two were accepted, and one was rejected.
Why was the third one rejected?
Because they did not complete the RFP process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, says Kenwood is supported by a local vendor to do the work, the magnets and all that?
According to the RFP, for both proposals, our local radio system, according to the RFPs that were sent in and the proposals from those vendors, both, both of them are supported by our local radio.
Have you checked with other vendors to see if they've been supported like they should be?
Did we?
Have you checked with any of the other customers of these people to see if they've been supported as it should be?
We have checked with, so part of the RFP process is, is for us to, to check references, and those have been checked.
So what about that, you were talking the other day about the coverage area. I know we have problems down in South River, and someplace around Cape Lookout, Cedar Island. What are the, some of the upgrades that's going to take place?
So we, when we put out the RFP, we asked for ninety-five percent coverage throughout the whole county, because you can't get a hundred percent coverage. Both, both of the proposals came back and guaranteed ninety-five percent coverage throughout the county. Their upgrades are, are how they're going to set up their own systems, and that, they have to guarantee that we'll have the ninety-five percent coverage.
What is their prestige now? Or you said, what, I forgot?
Supposed to be eighty-five percent, eighty-five-ish percent.
So you can't get a hundred percent? Why, why would that be?
Um, there's a lot of different factors when it comes to radio systems, weather being one, and just having different spots.
You were telling, you were telling, we went, that there was a place over on the beach, and regardless of what y'all did, you couldn't, you couldn't?
We fixed that. You're talking about Pine O'Shore, and Salt Path Indian Beach. That's been pretty well fixed now with, with a, a system that, that, excuse me, that ECI put together to put over there.
That was near the, the block condominiums, things like that?
Correct.
On the, on the ocean side?
Correct.
I mean, this is a, this is a very big ticket item. I was, I was shocked when it was brought up that we were going to have to redo the whole, whole system. And I'm glad you're finally coming to a, to an agreement to get something done on it.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
We are using the opioid money to pay for this? Is what, what funds?
Well, no, we.
No. We have some ARPA.
Which is a blessing.
Which is federal funding that we received about two years ago that this eligible project is being done.
It's not a blessing. All right. If there's no other discussion, I need a motion to approve the JVC Kenwood as the vendor choice of the Carteret County Public Radio Project.
Just one question first. I got lost in the weeds here. How much is this going to cost?
So the two separate, there's, there's two separate costs per vendor. JVC Kenwood's cost is twelve million, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
That's the emergency center?
What's that?
The emergency center? Is that what you said?
No. JVC Kenwood's proposal is for twelve million, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and Communications International is at seventeen million, five hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Told you it was a big number.
Thirty billion bucks.
Twelve million, twelve million.
That's both vendors combined.
That's both.
It's both figures combined?
Yes, sir. It's just the twelve.
Yeah, one bill seventeen, one bill twelve. All right. Was there a motion?
There's any public comment, sir? It's not a, we're not in, we're not, we haven't got there yet, right? There's, there's not going to be any public comment on it. All right. So I need a motion for more discussion.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve JVC Kenwood as the vendor of choice for the Carteret County Radio Project. Do we want the second motion?
Yeah.
And a motion to allow contract negotiations between JVC Kenwood and the county management.
All right. We have two motions on the floor. Do we need to have a second?
Second.
Have a second for Commissioner Chabwick. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. All those opposed? You got that? All right. All right. Thank you. Mr. Ray, we appreciate it.
Somebody opposed?
No, I hope so.
Okay. It was unanimous, right?
And then, our next item is item number ten, continued discussion on public safety pay increases. Mr. Ace a Buck, Sheriff Ace a Buck, and Tommy Burns is going to back you up tonight.
Good evening, everybody. I appreciate the opportunity to come up and speak with you about some of the issues that we've been having for some time in our office regarding recruitment and retaining qualified folks that work in the sheriff's office, particularly our deputy sheriffs working in our patrol division and our, and our detention officers who work in our jail. Over the years, we've been having a fair bit of trouble with regard to trying to recruit new people. And that is based on the salaries. Our salaries in comparison to the other eight police departments in our county, and as well as to surrounding sheriff's offices, the Oslo County Sheriff's Office and the Craven County Sheriff's Office. And a lot of it is part of the, the bigger picture that we're all feeling. It's not just my office. The other police departments are feeling the same situation that we do, and it's not unique to Carteret County. It's all across our state. All you have to do is do a simple Google search and look at what municipalities and counties, the, the types of problems that they're having, the same as we are, with open positions and inability to be able to recruit people and retain those folks and keep them in our profession. We have a lot of people that join law enforcement, come to work in a jail, and stay a short time, and they'll either jump ship and go to another agency that pays more money, or they'll get out of our profession altogether. Either way, if we lose them, we lose them. And they take every bit that they learned and obtained, and they take that with them, they go out the door, most of the time never to return. So I mentioned recruiting. We don't get the applications that we used to in the past. I certainly don't feel that we're getting the applicant, the applicants that a lot of our competing, I hate to say competing, because we're all friends and, and coworkers, and we all support one another, but we are, are all competing for the same folks. Our police departments, they want to be fully staffed, just like we do. And, but those who have higher salaries and are providing more in regard to their annual percentages in merits and COLAs, they're getting more applicants than we do. And they're getting applicant, applications from applicants who never even apply to the sheriff's office. Every time somebody picks somebody up, and my staff and I, we discuss, well, this person went to work at this agency, this person went to work at that agency. And we look at each, did they, did they apply to work in the sheriff's office? No. We didn't get an application from that person. So it's not just the people that we're losing, but it's also the people that we're not even getting a crack at, at even hiring, to get them in the door, to interview them, to have them to come to work for us. Fewer people looking to get into law enforcement in general. The numbers of basic law enforcement training are down all across the state, and they fluctuate a little bit here and there. But with all the turmoil that's been played out in the national media over the past several years, even though we don't have those same types of issues here in Carteret County as exist in other places, the folks that live in our county still watch the same television as everybody else. So when they see this turmoil playing out in other places, and how people don't support law enforcement, and how every move that they make is second-guessed, and years ago, where officers used to have to worry about getting sued, now they have to worry about getting indicted and prosecuted in certain places. even though our situation is a little bit different here than it is in a lot of other places around the country,
A lot different.
and even some places here in our state, our folks still, like I say, they still watch the same news coverage as everybody else. And you have people who don't want to get into law enforcement. They don't want to be in these public safety jobs anymore, especially when they're being second guessed so much, and the potential for making a mistake, of being sued, or even possibly being prosecuted. I never thought, in twenty-six years in law enforcement, that we'd be talking about cops getting prosecuted for making mistakes. But that's the way it is in some parts of the country, and even in some parts of this state. Talk about the retention, high turnover. As I mentioned, people leave our agency, they go to work to other, they work to other police departments that are paying higher salaries, or getting out of the business altogether. And I believe that our lower salaries and the annual COLAs and merits negatively affect our ability to recruit and retain people, as they can apply and go to other agencies and make more money, or, once they come and work for us and get a year or two of experience, and then apply to those other agencies and get hired at higher salaries and the like. All turnover is not a bad thing. I think anybody would agree with that. Some turnover is good. But when you have turnover, and I'll get through some of these slides here in a second to show you some of our numbers, but the turnover that we've been experiencing over the past several years, for quite some time, more so in the past several years, creates an, a burden in a number of different ways. The turnover creates a burden on our administrative staff and our command staff, who spend a good portion of their time offboarding people and onboarding people. And Heather Dagel was recognized earlier from HR, and I gotta send the kudos out to our county HR department. My folks can hardly keep up with the people coming and going. And so our county HR, and not just from the sheriff's office, but all the other people that are coming and going out of the county government, they've got a tremendous job to keep up with all those people that are coming and going, and all the paperwork and administrative tasks and everything else that goes along with hiring a new, number one, trying to find a new employee, hiring a new employee, getting them on board, getting them to work, getting them up to speed so they can get to work, and then those people turn around and leave, and then you got to go through all that process to process them out. It's a tremendous burden on a lot of people, not just the folks in my office. But when we hire someone to come work with us in the sheriff's office, you know, I think sometimes people think, well, you just hire somebody, you just, you know, they come in the door, you say, hey, here's where your desk is, or here's where you go to work, whatever, and you just put somebody to work, and that's just the way it is. Well, that's not the way it is. There's a heck of a lot of work that goes into bringing a person on board and putting them to work. All of the paperwork that's in, especially with those of us in law enforcement, we have to conduct background checks, we have to work through sheriff's training and standards to certify all of our employees, detention officers. Back when we had communications, we used to certify the telecommunicators through training and standards, all of our sworn personnel, and there's a tremendous amount of paperwork that goes in that, sending information in, getting information back from training and standards, on and on. April could stand up here and she could give a class on it and explain it a lot better than I can, because she's the one that does most of the work. And then you bring people on, you hire them, you get them going, send them through field training, and our field training officers and our supervisors are constantly training new people. And our supervisors, they're spending all this time field training and training folks, it takes away from their time and ability to supervise everybody else and all the other things that are going on on their shifts, both in our jail and in our patrol division. And it's a burden to keep our divisions staffed with properly trained employees. All the things that we have to do to get a law enforcement officer and detention officer going, they have to go through the field training process, they have to learn everything through our records management system and the MDIS, which is the laptops out in the cars, CJ leads, DCI, e-warrants, and the other things that we want to try to get them trained in. CIT is a big thing that we try to do nowadays, driver training, TASER, BATAAN, mobile field force training, standard field sobriety training, officer survival, Alpices, on and on and on and on and on. In addition to the annual training that we have to provide for them, that's mandated by the state for their in-service training, and all of the things that we try to keep up with every year and with all of our folks, that we're all expected to do, especially these days, more training in dealing with people with mental health, more training in dealing with people with substance use issues, more training in dealing with people in crisis and being able to de-escalate situations as opposed to using force, using proper force, all the rules and regulations that go along with that, and everything else that we have to try to teach and provide training and impart knowledge upon our officers who are out here on the road, serving the public in any number of different ways, not just answering a call and trying to get everybody calmed down and then leaving, but all the other things that we have to do with regards to conducting investigations. And many of these investigations are a lot more detailed nowadays than they were years ago, even when I started twenty-five, twenty-six years ago. Our detectives will tell you, we spend more time now doing search warrants for, on electronic devices and things like that. We do more search warrants in a week than we used to do in a year or two or three, back when I first started as a deputy twenty-five, twenty-six years ago. With all this turnover and people coming and going, and they stay a short time and then they leave, that keeps us from being able to certify new field training officers. These are future supervisors that we're losing. Just purchasing and issuing equipment and uniforms to folks that are coming and going, ammunition, firearms qualifications, the time of the instructors to do all of these things. You know, I've seen articles, I've seen people talk about the cost of turnover, and I'm not going to sit up here and say that it costs X number of dollars to hire somebody and put them to work, and then they walk out the door, they take that money value with them. My issue, as the elected sheriff of the people, who is expected to put competent deputy sheriffs to work and serve the public in the proper manner that they deserve, my issue is not the dollar that it costs when they leave. What we miss out on is when they take the institutional knowledge that they learn when they work with us, and they take that with them when they leave. They can't just take that and put that on a flash drive and turn that in like they can their pistol or their bulletproof vest or their car or whatever. So if somebody comes and works for us for a year, or two, or three, or four, or five, or six, longer, when they leave, they take every bit of that knowledge with them when they go. And there's not much more valuable commodity for a deputy sheriff. When you give people training, they go and sit in a classroom, they learn ideas, they learn principles, and they go and apply those things out in the field, in the jail. But it's the actual experience of doing the work, the actual experience of dealing with the people, of dealing with all the situations that they deal with, the good, the bad, the stressful, the ugly, the hateful, the harmful, the deadly. All of that stuff is right here. And when they leave, they take every bit of it with them. And they don't come back. When our detention officers leave, I have nobody working in our jail that works for me part-time as a part-time detention officer. When they leave, they don't come back to work part-time. They leave and they're gone. And then we have to start over with a clean slate and begin that process again. Well, that might not be that big of a problem if it was people leaving here and there. But it's like a revolving door in our office, and I'm not the only sheriff that has this problem. I mean, I talk to my sheriff buddies all the time, and I listen, they have the same struggles that I do, and...
How are they solving their problems?
Same thing I'm up here asking for, is increasing salaries. Another thing all you have to do is a simple Google search, I meant to say that when I was talking about this a second ago, and look up any number of these news articles, type in detention shortages, police officer shortages, pay increases, any of those things you want to type in, and you get, you look at those news articles, and I've been watching this trend for years. This isn't something new that's just come about. Municipalities and counties are dealing with these issues and dealing with these struggles, and they're dealing with it by increasing funding and paying higher salaries.
Do you have some more slides you wanted to show us on this?
Yes. I wanted to get through this information here before I get into the, before I got into the slides, get sidetracked.
You wanted some more pictures. You wanted some more pictures, didn't you, Bob?
Yeah, I can't read any pictures.
I wish we could make that print bigger on that screen over there. That's a little better. A little bit too much there.
Hey, yeah, there you go.
There you go.
That's pretty good. All right, well, the first slide from top to bottom is a representation listing the agencies and what they pay. Well, the way we've got it in there just shows the hourly rate, and over to the right-hand side of the column shows the annual salary. Focus on the column that says eighty-four hours. All the police officers and our deputies that work in the county, they work, they all work the same shifts, twelve-hour shifts, and they're all working eighty-four hours every two weeks, as opposed to eighty hours, which some of our staff works an eighty-hour every two-week work week. But as you look on there, you see where the sheriff's office is currently, is at the very bottom. Our starting hourly rate is nineteen dollars and eighty-six cents an hour. You look going, thank you, Ray, going up the chart, you see how those salaries increase and how the salaries increase correspondingly with the yearly...
So the inside number, the, like on the bottom, was forty-three thousand, that's the current salary, is that correct?
That's the current sheriff's office salary.
And the other one is the salary that it was raised from?
No, that's the forty hour.
That's with the...
Forty hour?
The one that's in the, the one that's in the red right there.
That's your recommendation?
That's where we would go
Right.
with the twelve percent salary increase that I'm requesting. And here again, it doesn't put us at the top, and when we were putting this information together over the past few weeks, we didn't have the information that was just recently made available last week after Morehead City increased their, increased their pay in implementing their new pay plan. So, Morehead City was actually, we would actually be going above them a little bit had they not increased theirs. Twelve percent would put us two slots ahead of Morehead and Atlantic Beach. Here again, it doesn't put, it didn't put us to the top of the pack before. It certainly doesn't put us to the top of the pack now, and, you know, I'm not coming up here and saying, hey, I want to have the top-paid folks in the county. I'm not coming up here and I'm not asking to be number one. What I am asking for is to put us up with the others near the top so that we are in a position to recruit folks, and also to, well, to be able to retain folks, and also to be able to recruit experienced officers. And I don't want to say that I'm going around trying to pick off police officers from here in the county, you know, with the police chief, and get my chief mad at me. None of us go around trying to pilfer people from one another. But, you know, we have a lot of people that look to move here from other places, too. And if you have those officers that want to move here from Greenville, or Raleigh, or wherever, another state, or somewhere else in North Carolina, and they're going to look and see what the salaries are, well, if they look at this chart right there, or similar information online, they're not going to apply to come work at the sheriff's office. They're going to go apply to work to, I don't want to call anybody out by name, but any of those other agencies. Both, Morehead, Pine O' Shores, Atlantic Beach.
Sheriff, you, you, you know, I'm in, this is my eighth year, I've heard you, heard you make this pitch several times, and I agree with what you're saying. What you're saying is definitely something that all employers have to deal with, regardless of what type of business it is, time is demanded, and look at each of your chart there, and I'm sure your figures are right, but I'll bet you that within a year, maybe less, maybe, maybe a little bit more, we'll be having the same conversation, because it'll never stop. It's like playing lead frog, and it'll, it'll never stop. I don't, how long ago, how long ago was our last...
The last time I did this?
Yeah.
Twenty-twenty-one. But we didn't get moved up near the top when we did that, and we didn't get moved up near the top when I did this back in twenty-seventeen.
I'm not disputing what you're saying. What I'm saying is that I know where you're coming from, and I know, I know that what you're up against, and I know that it's not going to, we might put a temporary fix on it here tonight or some other time, it's an ongoing, growing battle.
Mr. Sheriff, I got, I got a question, too. This is very informative for the public, the taxpayers, to see, to see these numbers and to be able to understand it. Out of all of those departments, who has the best, who has the best retirement plan? Do we have a, do you, does your, does your state, I'm just asking the question, does you, do you, is there something more we have, that we, that we can brag about while you have the attention of the taxpayer? You know, I know, I know there is, sorry?
Is it all the same? Are they all the same?
Is it all the same with the towns and the, and the county? Do they get a state, you get, do you get a state retirement program? Or, I mean, I'm just asking, I don't know, I'm just asking.
All, all, all police officers, everybody that works for municipality or the county, we all participate in the local government retirement system. There's a state retirement system, and then there's a local government retirement system. I mean, I don't have a lot of the information on all the other perks that some of the other, the other towns provide. I would say generally, we probably all doing roughly about the same thing, probably some differences from here, here and there.
No, I was just curious, I was just curious, because I know some other positions in our county, people have decided to come to work for the county. I know we have a shortage, and we're short across the board. But some have come here because of our retirement plan, and it's better than some of these towns and that type of thing. But I guess police and, you know, that type of thing is separate.
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't be able to...
Retirement's the same, doesn't matter which one is. Has some of us do with the way leave's paid out in a retirement?
Yeah.
Sheriff, how many officers does Morehead City have approximately?
About a hundred and twenty.
Forty-seven?
What? No, in Morehead?
Police officers. You're asking, just police officers, not their total, not all, not the staff.
They have a hundred and twenty in the police?
That's a certain thing, man, I don't like.
I think, I think that referenced their, their study, well, we've got one of the town commissioners sitting here. I think that, that something like a hundred, a hundred and some out of the, all the towns, total one hundred and some were under the market rate or value, or value, or something like that?
We were a hundred and forty-four positions were below the market rate compared to our periods. We did a classification and compensation study with Becker Tilly in the stone firm out of Chicago, and the results found compared to the market periods that a hundred and forty-four staff positions were below the market rate.
But that's not just the...
Not what you told me to Google, they're the highest now, most places in state.
Is that, is that the...
Morehead?
Yeah.
They're on the top-ten list.
They got a hundred and forty-four officers?
No, no, that's their total.
Their total staff.
How many of these police officers do they have?
I think April looked at the forties.
Forty-seven?
I didn't know they had forty-seven.
Are they the second biggest police?
They would be the second largest behind us.
Behind y'all. Y'all are a hundred, at a hundred and nine on center.
We have a hundred and fifteen full-time positions, forty of those folks work in the jail. We have, what, sixty, seventy?
So deputies are how many?
Seventy?
Well, you have to, you got, you got to break that down if you want the full number. We have twenty-six that work, work shifts on the patrol division. We have twenty-six that work, work, work shifts on the patrol division.
Twenty-six on the road.
Seventy-three sworn and forty-two non-sworn.
Yeah, seven, seventy-three sworn and forty-two non-sworn.
Hey, so this, this money that we're talking about, that you're talking about right now. How many of your officers in the number is that going to pertain to? Is that going to pertain to just your patrol division or is that going to go to?
It would be everybody in my office except for those of us that are the highest four paid.
So the highest, everybody except for?
Except for. Yes.
So we're, we're, okay.
Which would, the highest four are me, my chief deputy and two majors. It would, it would be from the captain level on down.
And it would all be this, it'd all get the same percentage? Like one group would get six percent, one group did four?
Generally, except for those who had already received an adjustment last year. When, when I came back to the board and we had to do the adjustments for the detectives.
Yes.
And we used our concealed weapon money and put in there.
I remember that, what I'm talking about.
Yeah, some of those folks already had adjustments. So if, in other words, if you authorized twelve percent, those that got ten percent would get two percent. And I think we had three positions that received five percent, so we would, we would.
The ones that got ten percent on the last one, they'd, they'd only get two.
Yes, so, so everything will equal out.
I got you.
That way, that way nobody gets more than the other and.
I understand.
The ones that were adjusted a few months ago, they had their adjustment. So that way, if we do these at twelve percent, we would make everything equal out with everybody throughout the office. That way, nobody, no one gets more than the other.
So with that twelve percent increase that you want, that's, that's where that's going to land, you're right in the middle of that chart.
Yes, sir, I'd like to show you a better. That's what it looks like on a bar graph.
You're in the red, right?
Currently, we're in.
Currently, that's where you want to be is in red.
Red's where we want to get to.
So let's switch the colors.
Okay.
Now, those municipalities that pay more than the sheriff's department, are they fully staffed with officers? Or do they have openings that they need to fill as well?
I wish Morehead was fully staffed because they're getting ready to steal four, four, five or six people from, from the rest of us. I think they got five or six openings and I'm sure they'll be filling them pretty quick. Matter of fact, I was told today that one of mine's already applied to Morehead. That's just the one I know about.
How, how big is the Beaufort Police Department? How many people would you just give?
Uh, I'm not exactly sure. What do you think, John? Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen police officers in both? Yeah, I don't, I don't want to get anybody mad at me.
The reason I ask you that is, you know, a, a, a ten percent raise of five people, that's a lot different than a ten percent raise of a hundred people.
I'd be Billy back in a bucket ring.
Yeah. Yeah, it is, it is. And, and I know I've heard, you know, I, I've heard it said a number of times that we don't want to be in a race to the top. We don't want to be in a leapfrogging competition, this and that and the other.
But you are.
But, but if you look at that chart, yeah, we are.
You're going to stay there.
If you look at that chart, everybody else is in competition, whether we get in the competition or not. And if we don't get in the competition, we don't get the opportunity to cross the finish line and win the race.
Jimmy. Tommy, we talked one time about making a group for the nine-one-one, telecommunicators, jailers, paramedics, deputy sheriff.
We talked about, I think right now, I don't know that we want to have two separate Facebooks at this point. But I think that we, you know, I think the issue he's trying to get addressed is here. It's, I mean, the, the same argument we could make for the nine-one-one center with telecommunicators as well. So that it's, it's sort of a joint consideration that we were asking y'all to look at tonight. Mr. Ray's got the same, some of the same issues with retention in the nine-one-one center.
Is he fully staffed now?
No.
How far, how short is he? Eight?
Needs a eight, right?
I don't have any.
Twenty-eight.
All right, hold on one second, Commissioner Kavanaugh has a question to ask.
When you began, you spent a lot of time talking about training and certification and all this experience your folks get. How much does it cost out of your budget? How much of that is spent on training and certifying your, your folks in the course of a year on average? Twenty percent, fifty percent?
According to my budget officer, we budget about thirty-five thousand dollars a year. And that's for training, that's for, that's not just bringing on new people.
For individual or for everybody?
For everybody.
That's for everybody.
Oh, that's just the criminal division? Okay, so for the jail would be?
I think it's less, it's like fifteen to twenty.
Yeah, another fifteen to twenty thousand for, for the jail.
How long, how many days, weeks does it take to train a regular officer, average officer?
When you say train them, train them in what?
Train them to come, to come to work for you as a patrolman.
Well, if we hire somebody fresh out of BLET, that's basic law enforcement training, which every state-certified police officer has to take. Derek, what's the current hours? Six hundred and some hours? And beginning, well, actually, Carter County is one of the pilot test sites that is running the new BLET curriculum. And they have added approximately two hundred hours.
Well, tell me, what, what does it mean in weeks and months, hours?
If you take a day class, what used to be a three-month day class is now a four-month day class. If you take a night class, what used to be six months is now right at eight months. So we have fewer people coming in and it's going to take us longer to get them. Which is creating another trend where age, law enforcement agencies are actually hiring somebody and then paying them while they go to school so that they have that person when they graduate so they can put them to work. So somebody else doesn't pick them up. And then they're sitting there with no, with no applications like we are.
Yeah, but once they graduate from that, you're also going to spend a month or two with him riding somebody else.
Absolutely, yeah.
So you're going to have ten months.
Our field training is roughly three months. It takes about three months. If, if you start fresh out of BLET and we put them, we put them to work for about three months in, in field training.
Commissioner, Commissioner Kavanaugh's not finished yet.
Thank you.
He was being quiet, we thought he was finished.
Well, I don't interrupt. Anyway, your, your recruitment problem, as you said, is across all the police force, but really it's, it's, it's across every economic situation. You know, the military's having a hard time recruiting folks to fill in their, their ranks. And they have a hell of a damn pay package and benefit packages and they still can't find people. Now, all the time and effort and money and sort of you spent on training and certifying. If these towns hire these folks away from you because they're paying more money, I don't blame them for leaving. What I see as a silver lining to that is all that training and certifying and that experience stays within the county. So that's county money that we spent, spending in the county being utilized by the municipalities. The, we've, we've been going through this, this race to the top since caveman days, I guess. And it's not working because where, where does it end at a hundred thousand a year for a new guy getting hired? You know, that's where we're headed if, if, if it's, well, we got to raise it because he raised his, we got to get up there. Something's got to change, there's got to be a whole new paradigm shift here to recruit people. Your hardest thing you're having to fill is recruiting. And just throwing more money at it. Doesn't solve the problem because we're right back in the same game. You know, the municipalities go, hey, the sheriff's department just raised theirs a twelve percent. And if we want qualified people, we need to raise ours. You know, they're looking at you as a farm. You know, you're, you're the farmer's market. And they come to the sheriff's department and take your people because they're already trained and certified, which takes the expense of that off of the municipalities, although they have to have continual recertification-type training. But I was surprised that your whole, out of your whole budget, you only spend thirty-five thousand a year on training and certifying. I mean, of course, wages are involved there too because these people are tied up during that period of time. But.
Another question.
And I agree with what you were talking about, how the, the, the news media has really made law enforcement the bad guys. I, I get lost in a YouTube black hole every night watching videos of cops getting beat up by thugs where crime taking place and the cops are just standing by in, you know, the major cities and stuff. So I hope we can all get together on something here on the board to figure out a way to crack this, this puzzle. You know, I have the highest respect in the world for law enforcement. I can't think of a, a more nobler profession, whether it's law enforcement or military enforcement. I have the highest respect for you as the county sheriff. You've done an outstanding job. You're, you're on top of everything except for when they awarded you the golden leaf you knew nothing about.
What kind of detective are you?
Oh, the, the order of the long leaf, fine, yeah, that was a, that was a complete surprise. They, they fooled me on that one.
Anyway, have you considered any other alternative other than, well, let's just give another raise. I mean, you were here in twenty-one asking for a twelve percent raise then and it took effect in twenty-two.
He didn't get the close.
Essentially, two years ago, you got a twelve percent raise.
No, I got ten percent. Is that what you're saying?
Which, which wasn't, which wasn't what I was asking for at the time. I was asking for a Plan A and that got shot down, we went to Plan B. So.
Refresh our memory on that.
You mentioned about, and here again, I understand the comment, where does it stop? You know, this one raises, this one raises, this one raises. Another part of our issue has been, a lot of places look at their, their positions and do a market analysis, a study or whatever, and they keep pace with things as they go. When we don't adjust things like everybody else does, we don't adjust with the market, we don't adjust with inflation. And then we get two or three years down the road, that puts somebody like me in a position to come here and say, here's the problem. Because these municipalities have been keeping pace with market adjustments. They've been keeping pace with inflation. They, they provide colas every year or almost every year in addition to merit increases. We provide colas every now and again. And a two percent cola, whereas other towns are providing five percent colas, six, seven, eight, ten percent to keep up with inflation over the past few years. We haven't done that. So when these folks move ahead, we're getting left behind. I don't come up here and ask for increases every year. I did request a twelve percent salary increase in my budget last year. It was not included. So here I am again, asking for twelve percent again. If I'd got twelve percent last year, I wouldn't be here asking for twelve percent this year. Wages are going to go up. Every municipality, the county, we've all increased wages over the years. None of them have gone down. So if we don't want to be in a, if we don't want to be in a race or comparison with anybody, you just leave the rates exactly what they are, you'd never adjust it. Well, in about five years' time, you wouldn't have anybody working for Carter County in any position, unless, unless the sheriff's office.
Well, I'm surprised you have anybody working for you now at this pay scale because I started working in nineteen sixty-six at two bucks an hour. Adjusted for inflation, that two bucks an hour is worth about nineteen and a half dollars an hour now. And that's where you got your basic law enforcement guys starting out basically at what minimum wage was fifty, sixty years ago. And so, yeah, we, you know, pay scale has not kept pace with inflation. The, and you do need an increase. But what you're asking is that's going to cost, what was the, the total price of six hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year?
The impact on next year's budget would be six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. But I'll, I'll tell you what the present situation is. I'm requesting this increase to begin in the next pay cycle. We have enough money in lapsed salaries by all of these open positions that we've had for the past several months to pay for this increase through the rest of the year, the rest of the fiscal year and still have money left in the fund. So if you provide us a twelve percent increase effective today, there'll be no, there'll be no impact to the current budget because that money has already been funded to be paid for, to pay these salaries. There's enough money in lapsed salaries to pay for this increase through the rest of this fiscal year. So there'll be no additional impact on the current fiscal year's budget, but it would be an additional six hundred and thirty thousand dollars to next year's budget.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Hey, so one, it, I don't even know if what I'm going to ask is even legal or practical or what. But if you were to hire somebody and you would say you hired them at fifty thousand dollars, you say, I'm going to hire you, I'm going to train you, I'm going to give you a gun, I'm going to give you a car, I'm going to give you all this stuff, but you got to give me five years. Is, is, is that something that's doable or non-doable or ever been considered? Kind of like, you know, going into the military, you do a four, six, eight-year stint? I mean, is that something that's ever been considered or is, is, is it practical?
There are some agencies that do that. They, they require people to sign contracts. The only thing I would say about that is if somebody's intent to leave, they're, they're still going to leave. What, then you have to go and sue them to try to get your money back. And I don't, you know, I, I, I'd have to look and see how some other agency may do that somewhere else. And, you know, has, has anybody's ever left? Have you forced their hand? Did you have to go and sue them? Did you even say, well, we don't even worry with it? I think a lot of that's probably just like a handshake, if somebody breaks the deal, they break it.
I want to just bring up a couple of things that we talked about in our workshop when you gave us this presentation a couple of weeks ago. One of the things that, that is evident in the county is there is, there's actually, even at these pay increases in some of these towns, I see it all the time, a lot of these police officers, they don't live in the towns. I mean, that's kind of like, not even possible anymore for them to live in, in the town. They, they, they are, they're, they're a police officer or whatever, or sheriff's deputy. Some don't even live in the county.
Correct.
I think we need to think about that. I think we've got the public's attention tonight and you're bringing up all these things. This is, I mean, it's, it's evident that we got an issue. We all know that, there's no doubt about it. One of the other issues, one of the other things you brought up in the workshop was, you mentioned the savings that your, your, your department has made along with, you know, trying to reduce this reciv, reciv?
Recidivism.
Recidivism. I said it good the other day, but I didn't say it in front of everybody else. Recidivism in the county, you know, several years ago, we had, we've been, we've been discussion, discussing the drug issue. What are we going to do about the drug issue? Well, obviously, you're, you and your department are doing everything you can along with the towns. They're all busting people for, you know, trying to take care of that issue. But somebody brought up, if we don't fund this, what's going to happen? And that was the answer I think you had. I think Domajovovich was in the meeting with us and said, okay, well, just don't do anything and see what happens. So we got to do something. We all know that. But just, and I, I got to say it because just the few things that you have changed, we just want people to understand that there is a lot of people that are not even in the jail. They're outside the jail, they're on a, they're on a ankle bracelet, I think that's what you call it.
Ankle monitoring.
Ankle monitor, they're not hardened criminals, but they're out making a wage, they're out getting, the main thing they're getting is a lot of these people that are dealing with drug issues are getting treatment. And that, that has got a value, that's got a dollar value. So we, we, we've got to think about all that when, with what we do. I had someone, I had a young gentleman that worked for me that just went to work, I think, for one of these police departments. I thought he was going to go to work for you.
Wish he would have.
Discussion we had was, nothing against the towns, but, you know, in a lot of, I think in a lot of states, the sheriff's department is the premium law enforcement agency you go to work for. So I can't keep, we, I can tell you right now, we can't keep up with Morehead. I, I commend you for what you, you guys did. But we can't, I don't think, I can't speak for anybody, but I can't, I can tell you right now, we can't do that. But we can't, I don't think, I can't speak for anybody, but I can't, I can tell you right now, we can't do that. I mean, we can't just change it just like that. But there is, we've got to keep in mind those things that you've done, that we're very proud of that you've done, and it's blending in the other counties around us. They're all going through these programs through the peer recovery center. Um, that's a big deal. You've saved us money from having to build the jail as quick as possible. I know you want to, we've got to build it, we've got to think about all these things, but they're all coming up. But some of those things that we've done have saved, if not hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars for this county. And they have a good recidivism rate, and that's keeping people from coming back into the jail. And that's one of the most important things we got to think about there. So, you know, this is a big deal, and we, and it's happening everywhere. It's happening across the board. There's no doubt about it. But, um, I, I, um, you know, you know, Commissioner Wheatley meant a contract, whatever, or, or some type of, of, of system where we could put some money out there to recruit some people to come in. And I don't know how that works. I know people are trying that, but any, any solutions we can come up with, but we're all, we're all open ears tonight, listening to you.
Well.
How about a bonus? We talked about a bonus.
Yeah, well, we, we talked about that, um, you know, trying to, and trying to get people into those positions quickly to get them trained up. And I will commend the college for having that BL, BLET class, because that's a great thing for a start, is it's right here in Carter County. The college is doing a great job with it. We need people in that program. We need people in the nine-one-one center. So, just wanted to make those.
And as far as the BLET, yes, they, they teach the BLET twice a year, something, the third offering if they throw in a day class. Most of the community colleges and, and ours does not teach the detention officer certification course. We have to hire people off the road without detention certification. We put them on the job, on the job training, and within one year, we have to send them to four and a half weeks of detention officer school. Right now, I'm down eight positions in our jail. I've got a couple of people out with medical issues, and I've got three people that we've had to pull out of our jail to send to a, a class that we're working with the college to put on, our own detention officer training school. And, um, and I've got staff involved in, in running that and operating it and teaching in it. And so, that, that puts us down those, those additional people for about four and a half weeks. And, um, so, when we got all the open positions that we have, it's a struggle anyway. And then when you got to take three or four people and send them to school, then you're down those positions even more. Eight open positions is basically, we're down an entire shift in our jail. And if we don't get these positions filled, and if we continue to lose people and don't fill positions, I'm going to get to the point that I'm going to have to close down a block in that jail. And then I'm going to have to send inmates to another county jail, and we're going to pay fifty dollars, excuse me. I just got a contract from Onslow County a couple of weeks ago. They're now charging sixty dollars a day. So, if I don't have staff to operate the jail and adequately look after those inmates and adequately look after our staff that's in there looking after those inmates, then I'm going to have to move inmates out of the jail, and we're going to have to pay to house them. And a lot of these jails are full. And if we can't send them to a jail close by, then we're going to have to send them to jails further away. Now, we crunched some numbers a few years ago when we were showing what the costs were for housing inmates in other jails. We used to budget three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars to house inmates in other jails. Nobody ever batted an eye, asking, "Why are we spending so much money housing these inmates in all the, in these other jails"? "Oh, well, it's cheaper than building a jail." That's what I was receiving. I don't think by any of you who are currently sitting on the board, but some of the previous board members, that was some of the comments that were made. So, whatever the hundreds of thousands of dollar number was, when we looked into the, all the other costs that were indirect costs, you pay fifty dollars a day for X number of inmates, that's a number. But it takes staff to arrange all those jail trips. It takes deputies, time, gas, wear and tire on vehicles to run those inmates up and down the road to those jails, and then bring them back here for court, and then take them back. The indirect cost of those, of that housing was about forty percent. So, if you're spending five hundred thousand dollars on housing inmates in another jail, you're going to tack on another forty percent for the cost of getting them there and getting them back. Now, Commissioner Farrington mentioned about the electronic monitoring program. Since you brought that up, I do happen to have a slide on that.
All right.
And I would just like to touch upon it. I might get Ray to.
Blow her up.
Zoom her up one more time. But if you'll go over to the, um, there you go, savings by year and then go down. There you go. When we look at the number of jails, since twenty nineteen, the past five years, when we look at the number of jail days saved, which we used to use the number of fifty dollars a day, which was a good number because we housed that inmate in another jail, that was fifty dollars a day, the cost is going up. We look at the, the, um, the jail days that we saved, the money that we saved by not housing those inmates outside, the fees that we collected for those certain inmates to be on the program, when we subtract out the monitoring costs, when we subtract out the cost that we pay to house some of these folks who get out of our jail and we're housing them in, in our residential recovery programs here in our county, we pay for those beds, but they're cheaper than fifty dollars a day, and we subtract out the salaries from the two deputies that I have overseeing the electronic monitoring program. Over the past five years, we've saved one point seven nine nine, one hundred, one million, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, nine hundred eight cents.
How many ankle bracelets are you using?
Sir?
How many ankle bracelets do you have out there?
Uh, we currently have right at seventy people that are out of, out of the jail on pre-trial release.
How many, how many officers does it take to keep up with seventy?
I have two deputies overseeing those people.
Thirty-five apiece.
Roughly, yes, sir. Well, for the past several months, I've had one doing it.
I understand.
Because I had an open position in the electronic monitoring unit, and I recently hired a retiree, which I, I'll, I'll get to that in a minute, because we've got such a young staff, I'd either got to pull supervisors out of their supervisory roles to make them detectives, electronic monitoring deputies or any other specialized position I have, SROs, or I basically got to pull these rookies off that have a year or two, or maybe three. And then when I pull somebody off the road, then I got to backfill that position with somebody else.
What's the, what was the cost of the equipment and the software to set this electronic monitoring up?
We pay about three dollars a day to monitor somebody on an ankle bracelet.
How, uh, how? What's the age on those monitors? How long can you use them? A year, five years, or are they periodically replaced, uh, manufacturer?
We've gone through different vendors over the years, and if, if we don't, we don't maintain all that equipment in our office, if we're not using it, we send it back to the vendor. If we need more ankle bracelets, they mail them to us. So if something breaks, we send it back. We don't, we don't go buy, we don't buy ankle bracelet per ankle bracelet. We, we basically, we basically pay for the daily cost of the monitoring.
Is it even possible for an officer to keep up with seventy inmates? I mean, is it, is it, is it possible for it to do that?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, probation officers, a, a lot of probation officers have a hundred people on their caseload.
Really?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And if they're on that ankle bracelet, we get alerts if they go places that they aren't supposed to be. If they tamper with that ankle bracelet, if they cut it off, it sends an alert, and my deputies go and they find that person and they bring them to jail.
The one deputy assigned to all those people, when, when, when your monitor goes off, does any deputy go?
No, not, it, it doesn't go to every deputy. It'll, it'll go to those, those two deputies that are in our electronic monitoring unit.
But again, again, these people that are on those are people that are able to work or go into a, a, a program. They're not, they're not, uh, I mean, they could pay their child support, they could do the things that they need to do, and it gives them an opportunity.
Roughly about thirty of those seventy are in residential recovery programs. The others are on pre-trial release, and they're going to school, they're working. As long as they're not violating conditions of their release, committing new offenses, they don't come back to jail. And, you know, we've, I mentioned, we, we, we're staying around seventy people that are out on pre-trial release, and I remind everybody, our jail has a hundred and sixteen beds. So that's sixty percent of the rated capacity of our jail that we have not sitting in the jail at fifty or sixty dollars a day at taxpayer expense, who are out being monitored in the community. And those folks who are going through those residential recovery programs were seeing good success and reducing recidivism and all that other stuff I talked about, I think, last time I was up here.
Any other questions?
Yeah. The, the other day, a couple of years ago, you asked for twelve percent. What did we give you?
Last year?
We give ten to the detectives, but two or three years ago, you asked for twelve, and what did we do?
Uh, back in twenty twenty-one, yeah, I think, I think it was about a, about, well, I was requesting a fifteen percent increase, and that was the Plan A. And that was, I think we were trying to get to forty thousand, five hundred annual salary. And we ended up going with the Plan B, which was more along the line of the twelve percent increase, which was, ended up being ten percent, then I think plus a two percent cola over merit. And, um, but that was a, no, we were trying to get to forty-two thousand, five hundred, and we ended up going to forty thousand, nine hundred.
I didn't know if you remembered the percentage. But right now, if my math is right, you're twelve thousand dollars less than Morehead. Because they went to fifty-five thousand.
Right.
So if you got the twelve percent, Morehead will still be seven thousand dollars more. We'd be at, uh, about forty-eight, was that number? And they're at fifty-five.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Morehead, Morehead will still be five thou- five thousand dollars more than the top paid in the county.
Right, but it'd be seven thousand more than you, right?
We're at forty.
Forty-three.
Forty-three, currently.
They're at fifty-five now. So that would be twelve, they're twelve thousand ahead right now. If you got that and you went up to forty-eight, it'd be seven, roughly seven thousand.
Yep.
Seven-five-hundred more.
Yep.
Than if you get the twelve percent.
Yes.
You know, tomorrow, Morehead City could say, "We want to get out of the police business", and the sheriff's office would have to take over Morehead. But tomorrow, the sheriff can't say, "I'm not going to provide law enforcement for the county." So you're mandated by the state or the world to provide that service. You know, just spent twelve million dollars on a radio system. What happens when you don't have a man to push the mic?
Commissioner Chavik, I'm, I'm glad you said what you said because I was going to say it myself. Municipalities, there's a list of eight services that they can provide, whatever they don't have to provide. I think they have to do four out of eight. But actually, if you read it a little bit closer, there's only one thing that municipalities are required to do. I think that's building code enforcement or something like that, that they're required to do. They have incentives to do other things. And there's a list of things that counties have to do. And when I pulled this up off the school of government website, the very first two things it says the county is responsible for is law enforcement and jail. Every town in this county could disband their police department today. And I'd be responsible for taking care of their law enforcement services.
And we'd get all those people working for us then?
We can't do that. The county cannot disband the sheriff's office. There's probably some counties that would probably like to. They might not like their sheriffs. But it, it can't be done. It's a function that has to be provided by the county. It's my job to run the office. It's the board of commissioners' job to adequately fund it. And I wouldn't be standing up here tonight asking you for a twelve percent increase if I didn't think that's what I needed. I should be up here asking for more than that. But I would hope that you all feel, I've been sheriff for seventeen years. There's been a lot of commissioners sat up there before you all that I dealt with, and I've worked with all of you what time you've been sitting up here. I would hope that you all feel that when I come to you, I come to you because it's a need. I'm not coming up here asking to be the highest paid just because somebody else has a high salary. I'm not trying to pad anybody's salary. I'm up here asking for this because I need it. I'm the one, and my deputies and my command staff, we're the ones that deal with everybody every day that calls down to that sheriff's office or calls over that nine-one-one center needing something. And I can't keep doing what the folks of this county elected me to do seventeen years ago if we don't adjust these salaries and keep pace with the other agencies in this county and our surrounding agencies. The North Carolina general statute says that the county commissioners have to give a sheriff at least two deputies. Now, I'm not saying, I'm not giving you a.
We have exceeded.
Permission to cut us. That's what the general statute requires, but I don't think any of us are going to go do that. The public expects a certain level of service. And our public in our county deserves a certain level of service. I didn't run for sheriff seventeen years ago to be the sheriff of an average organization. And here again, I'm not asking you to make us number one just so we can be number one. I'm not even asking to be number one. If you look on that chart, one, two, three, we'd be num- well, we would have been number four, now we're number five with Morehead's increase. I wouldn't come up here and ask for that if I didn't need it. We've got to fill these positions in our jail. We've got to stop and slow this turnover that we have in our criminal division, specifically our patrol division. We've got to get these positions filled. We've got to build the bench that we have so we don't just have supervisors that have been dedicated to stick it out with us for, for a while. And then a bunch of one and two-year people who keep leaving and keep cycling out.
It's how much money do, would it take from, from this point to the, to the, uh, end of the fiscal year? What, what are we talking about? I know he does. I want to know how he, he's got the money.
I think it's three hundred.
Three hundred?
Three hundred some thousand dollars.
And that would, that would still leave you with some money left over in that fund? How much would that leave you left over in that fund? Thirty thousand. Just cut it pretty close.
Dee says it's two hundred. Okay. Well, a lot less, a lot less than we thought.
Say it again. I mean, left me, struck me. It's going to cost three hundred to pay it out at the end of the year?
Dee says it's two hundred.
Two hundred.
So how much do I have left over? Hundred and twenty?
We got four, we got four hundred and forty thousand in lapsed salaries, so we'd have two hundred and forty thousand.
Two hundred and forty thousand left.
Left, which would go back into the general fund.
To pay for your, could be used to pay for your.
Could be used to offset the, this cost.
I'm going to make a motion to give him the twelve percent.
I'm going to second it.
All right. Um, okay, we have a.
Beginning in.
Okay, and let's, let's make sure that we have all this correct, because the last time we did this, we, I think we had some questions, but you even mentioned it earlier about the ten percent, you were trying to change it. So what your, your motion is, is giving him what he's asking for tonight, which is twelve percent to go to.
Well, it's going to begin at the beginning of the, uh, it's going to begin immediately.
It's papered.
He's going to, uh, use his own money to pay for the rest of the fiscal year, so July first, he'll start fresh with a twelve percent increase. The people he's already give ten percent to will only get the two percent increase. Correct?
Yes.
The, the, the people you gave the ten percent to last year, you're going to give them another two. That'd make it twelve, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Every, everyone will get the equal amount. If somebody's already been given something, which was a small number of people, detectives and three captains, they will get the equivalent to, to get them to the twelve percent.
That's, that's, uh, difficult work, working in the jail. A man's throwing urine at you and feces and chained to the. A man's throwing urine at you and feces and chained to the, uh, wall there eating his lunch out of a tray, and you're dealing with people all the time that could take your life at any minute and is
Okay, so just
Send the radios back if you want to have somebody that can work there.
So just to be clear, the motion on the floor is twelve percent, what you're asking for, that is giving, that is giving the twelve percent to the people, or raising the pay to twelve percent for the people you're trying to hire. And ten percent, or two percent to the people who only got ten percent last time.
Right, and this is exclusive to the top four pay?
It would be everybody in the office except the top four paid people and anyone who already received an increase this budget year.
Okay, and, and the main thing, uh, Dee is, we don't have a, we don't have a true number of what that's going to be. You, you don't know what that is off the top of your head, what's, the difference is going to be.
April should have it.
Six hundred, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Six hundred and thirty thousand.
Okay, because, alright, that's why I want to make sure.
Yeah.
Of which, they have two hundred thousand carried over from lap salaries, so it's a four hundred and some thousand dollar ask. Is that correct?
If he's thinking two hundred, and he's about two forty left, yeah, see, that's right.
Mr. Chairman, I, I fully support what Sheriff Buck is asking for. But I would like to have a very specific motion as far as exactly where we're going with this. This, this, we're kind of all over the place with these numbers right here. I, I, I would like to have something, you know, in writing, very specific. You know, something really to, to vote on. I, 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 and I am one hundred percent behind an increase for our deputy sheriffs, very much needed. But I, 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 I just feel a little uncomfortable, you know, where we are kind of going these numbers around, around something solid.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, uh, just add to that as well. I'll agree a hundred percent of what you say, that, uh, the sheriff's department needs some help. And, and I'd like to do as, what, what we can, as much as we can. I don't disagree with, with really anything that's been said during this entire discussion. My thoughts, we've only got, and he's, he's stated, he's got the money to, to cover the remainder of the year, which is only three months until the new budget year. My thoughts, before we do something tonight, and, and obligate the county to that in the next budget year, I would prefer, if we can hold this off and, and, and look at the entire budget picture, see where the entire budget for the county falls, and, and see the entire, the, the whole, uh, pie, if you will, before we, before we make a decision to, 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 to throw more money at it or, or, or fund something. We have a good solid figure. I don't disagree, I don't, uh, challenge the six hundred and thirty thousand dollars increase for a full year. But we don't know where the rest of the departments are going to come in. We don't know what that's going to do to the budget as a whole going forward. So I would just, uh, I don't feel like I can, I can support taking action on, on anything tonight.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, please. Sheriff Buck needs, he needs help now. He, uh, he, he doesn't want to wait until certain departments crumble, or one of his blocks has to close down before, before he comes back in here and asks us again for money that he's needed, the game that he's playing with these salaries, the game that every business, tire business, car business, any kind of businesses, salaries are having to be raised to meet, to meet the cost of inflation. People are not going to wait. The sheriff's office is, is suffering that. We certainly can't risk, uh, minimizing it and, and, and doing less of a job than what we're doing now. And, uh, I think the sheriff has put a lot of planning and thought into this. He's come up with a, a way to help pay for the first year of this thing, and I think we ought to go ahead and give him the money that he needs, let him do his job.
I think the number we've come up with is four hundred. Dee, Dee, you got a specific number between you and April? If he's got two hundred and some thousand left over to go toward the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget, you can subtract that off the six hundred and thirty thousand, so it's a four hundred and some, right out of four hundred thousand dollar ask, if I
Actually, if you want to extrapolate that out, how much money have we sent back every year from lap salaries?
Well, I don't know your department specifically, but, um, millions to the county account.
We, we, we return money every year that does, that, that, that is approved by the board to be spent for a service. It doesn't get done. That money gets returned. It goes back in the fund balance.
But we also approve a budget deficit in there when we use money coming from the surplus that would plug that budget to make it equal. That just means that the revenues were under in what they said, and what you estimated as income may have been more.
Yes.
But that, that doesn't, that doesn't, you didn't give it, if you didn't give it back, you still expended money. I don't think you can budget on anticipated salary lapses. When you've got money in salary lapses right now to, to cover the rest of the year, but we can't bank on that to cover
No, I'm, I'm I'm not saying that we bank on it in the future. My point is, is that we've, we've been returning money for years. So if we have two hundred thousand to offset what I'm asking for now, if you go back two years, or three years, or four years, how much money did we return that is sitting in the fund balance, oftentimes referred to as a rainy day fund? Well, folks, for some of us, it's raining. For some of us, it's storming. And I'm looking at that camera up there, and everybody's sitting at home that expect the sheriff to do a job, and I'm telling you, if we don't adjust these salaries, I can't get the job done for the people the way they expect and the way they deserve. I would not be standing here asking for it if I didn't think that I need it. And I think I'm well justified to ask for more than what I'm asking for. I'm trying to be conservative. I'm not coming up here asking for a twenty percent increase and let's see how everything goes. I'm asking for a twelve percent increase, and we're going to do the very best job we can to recruit and retain people. And if it's not enough, I'll have to come back again. If I didn't come up here and ask for this, I could be accused of mismanagement. If I let this turnover continue and have all these open positions and don't do anything to try to fill them and to do anything to rectify the situation, I could be accused of running the sheriff's office in the ground. But I'm not driving people away. They're leaving for more money. And we're not getting people to come to work to fill these positions because they're going to work in other places where they're getting paid more money. That's why I'm standing up here asking for this. There's nothing I despise anymore than had to come up here and stand at this lectern and ask for something.
You need Jonathan Robinson to answer the money now, what is the problem?
Yes, sir.
You said earlier that you're getting ready to lose four people to Morehead City?
No, I, I know at least one that's applied. The issue is the ones you don't know about.
If you got this twelve percent raise here, can you tell us that this, these four people aren't going to go to Morehead City?
I, I don't know if it's four. I'm saying that there's one. I mean, look, I mean, Morehead's increased theirs, but Morehead's not going, Morehead is not the only agency that we're in competition with. We still have all the rest of them up there on that list. But Morehead's got four, four, five, six positions to fill. Who knows where they're going to pull them from? Maybe they'll pull them from, from Goringo. I don't know. But you can be sure that in the future, not just the positions that they fill today, but every position they fill in the future, they're going to pull somebody from somebody else that's making less money, or they're going to get an application that all the rest of us won't even get the opportunity to hire that person.
Well, the Commissioner Kavanoff's, uh, question, when you got the ten percent the other day, that did keep a man from retiring. And it did, a man that was going to go to work at Beaufort ended up staying. So that was two well-seasoned detectives
Yes.
that stayed
Yes.
because of the money.
That we could not afford to lose.
And a good sheriff's office has many more benefits, like a quality of life and low crime and just like good school systems and stuff like that.
I want to make one comment. The, the, the size of the county minus the municipalities, is it's, is it still bigger than the actual total count of municipalities? Does anybody know that here?
Population wise.
It used to be population-wise, that forty thousand, forty-six thousand? Technically, not his district, it's the whole county, but I mean, is that, is that a true statement? And I just want to make this statement. I, I, I agree with Commissioner, um, Quinn, and I agree with Commissioner Shin at both ends of the table here. I fully support you, and I, and I want to make sure that we do this the right way. I don't want to, I don't, I don't know if I'm mistakenly, what's mistakenly saying what you're saying, are you saying wait till June?
I, yes, I'd rather wait and then fit this in in the entire budget, uh, as opposed to, to finish out the year and then
Okay, and, and can I ask you, Mr. Quinn, are you thinking more of this, this, this take it in and make a decision soon, very soon?
I am, uh, just to clarify my statement, I fully support you in this salary increase. But Lord knows, this board has made some mistakes in the past, and I just want to make sure we've got everything set up correctly. And I just ask until our next meeting to take a vote.
Okay, I'm going to say the same statement. I want to wait until the next meeting to make a statement. I don't want to ever vote against what you're asking for, and I don't think I ever have. But I just don't want to pull the trigger and make the wrong decision. I think that the, amongst us, you know, we've come up with some ideas that we'd like to share with you. Um, maybe some possibilities of injecting some money into trying to get those eight people quicker. And those possibilities, so I'm just making you aware of that. I'll now call for the vote. We got a first and a second to, to fund the twelve percent. You want to restate your
Yeah, I'm, I mean, uh, twelve percent, like he's asking for, he's, you can break it all down, the people got ten percent last year, they're only going to get two percent. The top four people weren't going to get the increase. It's just for what I call the blue collar working guys that are out there on the road doing a job, meeting the citizens of the county. Whether we wait thirty days from now and do it, or, or do it now, I don't see a whole lot of, a whole lot of savings, uh.
So we got a first?
We'll see where it goes, and, uh, I'll, I'll go along with a majority.
Alright, we got a first and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Alright, that mission, that, 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 that failed, but again, I, I, I feel confident that we want to come up with a solution and get with you directly between now and the next meeting. It may, maybe even sooner.
Well, if anybody'd like to come join in working some of those shifts in the jail, along with my chief deputy and the rest, we'd certainly be glad to have anybody who wants to come in.
And our next, uh, our next item is item number eleven, the manager's report, Tommy Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I thought I yielded my time to the sheriff.
Well, and actually, actually, you were going to just mention something about the nine-one-one center. Do you even need to mention it, or
I think, I think that you could make the same argument. The challenge for us is, is, uh, you know, we have to look at all first responders, and we have um, a, a, another problem area in, in nine-one-one with the same issue. But it goes even further than that. There's other classes of employees that, um, you know, that we know are difficult to recruit and hire. I would suggest at some point, um, doing a comprehensive pay-in class study, and it didn't have to be an expensive one that we contracted out. A lot of times, we can do a lot of the survey and information ourselves. We've done that in the past. We've done it in the past for specific departments, and we've done it in the past, you know, more overall and, and broad, um, strokes, so I think we, that it's just a product of our environment, it's a product of the recruitment and retention challenges that, uh, that we continue to have.
What kind of shortage do you have right now, personnel in that area?
Uh, pub- public safety is probably one of our most critical areas of the detention staff and the nine-one-one center. Um, the challenge with nine-one-one in particular is you can't, even if you have eight vacancies, you just can't hire eight people and put them right out there to start with. Same, the same issue, we can train about four people at a time, and that's usually one person on each shift. And so, you know, if, it would be great if we could go out and hire eight people tomorrow, but it would take some more systematic
How many vacancies do you have?
They have eight of twenty-eight are vacant right now in nine-one-one.
That's like a nine-one-one shift.
Yeah, which is equivalent to about, uh, two people per shift. And, you know, that, that's, uh, that cycles, you know, the, the tourist season, um, they're pretty busy. Other times of the year, it's, it's not as
How many, how many people work a shift?
Our minimum staffing requirement is four per shift.
And we're, we're missing eight. So I mean, we're double
So, so we're
The sheriff said he was down a whole, whole shift for the jail, but we're, they're double a shift for the nine-one-one center.
Yeah, but I, I think Steve, I don't know if Stephen, I think he just left, but I think Stephen's working in the nine-one-one center, so it's, it's not just one area of public safety, it's it's several areas of public safety. And it's difficult for us to, you know, pick and choose every little scenario where we have a, an inequity, which we, we have several of them. And, uh, through the years, y'all have always been very open in, um, trying to address those.
Just as a, interject a little bit, I've had, uh, I've had a call in nine-one-one three times in the last four weeks for assistance with my wife to help get her off the floor. And I mean, they answered right away, and within five minutes, I had ambulances at my house, so the system's worked like a well-oiled machine right now, even with the short staff, so hats off to all the folks that are involved in that.
And I think he has some of the same concerns there, you know, they do work a lot of hours.
Is their pay scale comparable with the sheriff was showing?
They're probably not paid quite as well. I don't know right off the top of my head, but
We made a change in that.
We should, we, we've, we've addressed that twice, I think.
That's still an issue.
Still an issue, still an issue.
They have to help out. That's a horrible job. They sit in a room with no windows, stare at their computer for a twelve-hour shift. One minute you're talking to somebody
You're not helping, we're recruiting you.
Well, one of them, one minute you're talking to somebody, their house is on fire, the next time you're talking to somebody who's having a heart attack, and next time somebody trying to kill herself, or somebody trying to kill somebody else.
Point taken, point taken.
It's, uh, it's not our fault. It's the economy, it's the Biden economy and the inflation. The fifteen dollar an hour is what you could get for ten dollars an hour back in the day. If little Johnny is changing oil down here paying twenty dollars an hour, little Susie ain't going to get too many applicants at, at, uh, ten. It's the world we live in.
Sorry to interrupt. Go ahead, carry on.
So there are, you know, there are challenges. It is difficult with, uh, even in social work. We've had some challenges and, and and it's not just here. I don't want you to think it's just a Carteret County-specific problem. I talk to colleagues all over the state. It's the same issue, same departments, uh, sheriffs making the same impassioned pleas to their commissioners, so it's definitely, it's not a Carteret County-specific problem. Uh, one quick thing I wanted to, uh, make you aware of, we should be starting work soon on the facade repairs at the courthouse property. As you come in, you've seen the fall protection that's been in place for a while now out there. That project, um, we don't really know the full extent of what they're going to get into until they start, you know, repairing the facade, so uh, it's possible we may find some other areas that need repair, and I just wanted to make you aware of that. We may have to come back at some point if any additional repair areas are found. Our capa project manager, uh, has been on board for about a month now, and he's been very busy. Uh, the community college has already asked him to help work on their trades project for the trades building that they're wanting to look at. Uh, we've, we've kind of filled him up with, uh, uh, jail project information and stuff to review on that, because that's still something that the board's going to have to take up here pretty soon and, and make some decisions on as well. Um, and then lastly, uh, we've, we're still working through all of the county budget, uh, for this coming fiscal year. We had a meeting this morning, uh, actually a second meeting that we've had with the school leadership to try to, you know, nail down some of their concerned areas and to better understand their requests going forward into this budget cycle. So we'll put all that together and, and be getting more information out to you probably in the May timeframe. And I think, I think that's all I have. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And our next, uh, item number twelve is appointments. Everybody's got their appointment, uh, sheets. Our first item is the, uh, is the nine-one-one communications advisory board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll nominate Chief Deputy John Nyberg for the sheriff's representative.
Alright, we've got Chief Deputy All right, we've got Chief Deputy John Nyberg, Sheriff's Office Representative. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The next item is the child fatality, fatality prevention team. Um, would that be you, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Sure. Um, I recommend Merle Hunt Jr., emergency services, medical services representative for a three-year term.
All those in favor of Merle Hunt Jr., raise your right hand. Mr. Kavanaugh.
Yeah.
Juvenile crime prevention.
I recommend, uh, Marlo Blake as the court council representative, uh, for a two-year term for the juvenile crime prevention council.
All right, and, uh, Commissioner Shen, municipal ETJ Newport Planning Board.
We need to vote on the.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mar, Marlo Blake, I apologize. All those in favor? The next one is the municipal ETJ Newport Planning Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Johnny Whaley to fill the unexpired tar, term of Tanya Quinn, who resigned.
All right, all those in favor of Johnny Whaley, please raise your right hand. The, uh, peer recovery center, we have one, one person on that slot, that's, uh, Nick, Nick Wilson for an appointment for a two-year term. All those in favor of Nick, please raise your right hand.
I have a job for Nick.
Uh, and the senior center advisory board.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend Shirley Cobb's as a representative, uh, for a two-year term.
All those in favor of Shirley Cobb's, please raise your right hand. All right. And, uh, commissioner comments. I'll start with Mr. Shen, Chuck Shen, Mr. Shen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first, uh, I feel like I, I'd like to just kind of clarify my, my, my statement just a few minutes ago. I, I fully support the sheriff and the sheriff's department, and, and I understand his needs, so I don't want, I don't want anyone to walk away from here this evening thinking, uh, otherwise. Because, uh, but I just feel like strongly that, that, you know, that's, that's a pretty important decision we need to make, and I think it needs to be made in part with, with the, with the next fiscal budget and with a little bit more due consideration from this entire board. Uh, so some more conversation with the sheriffs and conversations, uh, at, at some more meetings. So I just, again, I don't want, I don't want anybody to walk away out of this meeting tonight thinking that I don't support, uh, the sheriff's department and their mission, because I, I fully do. Uh, he does a great job, I can explain a bit with, with the operation and what they do over there. I don't know what else to say. I don't, I, I don't think they make enough, to tell you the truth, but they, they make what we're able to, to pay, so. So I'll leave that, is that, uh, next, um, I'd like to congratulate, congratulate the, the employees of the month for the last three months. Ms. Martini, Ms. Dagel, and Ms. Beaman, thank you for your dedicated service. Uh, and Ms. Martini evidently is retired, uh, so we wish her well. And again, thank, thank all those, those folks for their dedicated service to the, to the county. Number three, I remembered on my own this year, Tommy had to remind me last year that coming up April fourth and fifth is Newport's pig cooking. So, uh, Friday and Saturday nights, really a great event. They'll have some good entertainment out there. Go out Saturday and, uh, and, and pick up some barbecue plates, um, be available. They got a drive-through and you can ride through and, and pick up your plates right out of your vehicle, or you can go out and enjoy the festivities. They got a, a park full Friday night and Saturday, all day Saturday. Uh, and the last thing I'll leave with, uh, wish everybody a happy Easter. I hope to see you next month. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kavanaugh?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Shen's comments regarding, uh, sheriff's department and public safety. We do need to look at the big picture here. We, we got a lot coming down the road at us. I was thinking even further, hey, when we get that new jail built, whenever it's built, that's gonna take a lot more people to man that thing up for detention officers and whatever. Uh, it's a big ticket item all the way around, and, uh, yeah, we do need to discuss this more. Going with the twelve percent raise right now, it's a short-term fix to a long-term problem. We need to look at the, the long-term, and as I said before, something's gotta change, but we're doing is not working because we're doing the same thing over and over again periodically as, as it comes up. And it's just, we'll have to have some, some other intervention on this problem. But, uh, as I said, uh, I can't think of any more. I can't think of the right word to describe, uh, law enforcement officers. You put your life on the line, you, you know, you, you leave home hoping you'll be able to come back home that night. We don't have that much of a problem here as far as shootings, uh, we've had a few here and there. Another thing I wanted to talk about was, uh, sir, what was your, your name? You were talking about the voter machines, I didn't.
Brian Nicolau.
Brian what?
Nicolau.
Nicolau. You've come up here, uh, every month now for several months, uh, talking about the voting machines and, you know, my personal opinion, based on things I've looked at, we don't have a, a problem here. There's no widespread voter fraud here now.
But it's what about if they get hacked, is what he's talking about. I mean, they have the ability to be, I mean, I think that.
I don't have, I don't know of any instance where our voting machines have been hacked or even, uh, but, uh, attempted to be hacked. You know, I, I think your concerns are justified. I'm just as concerned with the way the twenty twenty election went down as, as you are. Uh, and I'm concerned about the, uh, what I consider an illegal incarceration of the people who haven't even been charged with a crime yet. But I also understand that they keep calling this thing an, an insurrection, so they can hold these people basically as POWs, and you know, you can hold them forever. Just like all the idiots down in Gitmo. Uh, if you're considered, uh, you know, a POW, you just belong to the government, period. Uh, your, your issues concerning the voting machines, I think you need to go up a notch to the, to the state level. Talk to, uh, House Member Celeste Cairns, Norm Sanderson, you can use my name if you want. But it's an issue that just doesn't apply to Carteret County, and, uh, I'm not saying you're beating a dead drum here, but it's, it's not going to impact, uh, what, what's going on here, so. If, if, if I can help in any way whatsoever, call me. And, uh, again, congratulations to our, uh, Jamie Long, uh, award winners. Heather, uh, Dagel, you had, uh, some big shoes to fill. And you've, you've done a remarkable job carrying on the, the, the burden that, uh, was, was heaped upon your shoulders under such tragic, shocking circumstances. Uh, some hats off to you. And I don't know, who put you in for this award? You? You didn't put yourself in for it. All right, anyway, well done, and, uh, congratulations to Sandy on her retirement. Hope you're, uh, living well on that secluded island you were able to buy with your retirement pension. And, uh, Jeannie Beaman, you got a great smile. I was looking at that picture of you up there on the wall, I thought, wow, that's a pretty smile. Congratulations to you too, and happy Easter. Don't eat too many jelly beans, save some for me. They are a legume, by the way. I'm done.
I'll reiterate all the comments made by the commissioners and wish everybody happy Easter, and we'll defer to the rest of the board to say this at the same time.
All right, um, Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, excuse me, my voice is a little bit scratchy. I've been hearing a lot of hooting and hollering over the last five nights as a result of the L C State Wolf Pack pulling out.
Wolf Pack.
Outstanding victory over that team from Chapel Hill. In all seriousness, I want to.
I forgot to mention Fowler.
Echo the thanks to our county employees, Mrs. Martine, Mrs. Dagel, Ms. Beaman, for their outstanding service. And, uh, I want to, uh, extend my condolences to the Fowler family as well. Um, I, I would like now to address a very grave concern, uh, that I have about White Oak Elementary School in Cape Carter. In a preliminary budget meeting a few weeks ago, the Cape Carteret Council decided to remove support for the student resource officer that the town provides at White Oak in their budget for this upcoming fiscal year. Uh, the council members informed their town manager that they wanted the county to take over this responsibility. Perhaps I need to begin with a little bit of history and a little bit of background information. The county is required by the state of North Carolina to provide student resource officers, SROs, to our high schools. Those SRO salaries are paid funded by the state. However, this board, uh, has supported providing SROs for other schools that are not within any city limit. For example, Bogtown Elementary, some of the schools east of Beaufort. Not only that, this board assists the towns and cities in our county with monetary support, uh, in providing an SRO from their respective police departments. We as commissioners do this because we care about the safety of our children in this county. And ironically honoring Mr. Dave Fowler this evening, um, he spearheaded the effort to install an SRO by, uh, the town of Cape Carter. Cape Carter was once a shining example of dedication to our children's safety. Very first town to provide an SRO over twenty years ago. And now the current city council in Cape Carter has decided to end their support for the SRO at White Oak. As far as the county deputy being used, uh, as the SRO at White Oak, Sheriff Buck just outlined what kind of problems he's having with the sheriff's department. Sheriff's department's already stretched thin. He needs those deputies, uh, to remain out on patrol, ensuring the safety of our citizens countywide. In a meeting a couple of weeks ago, uh, before the city council had their, uh, budget retreat, two of my fellow commissioners, our county manager, and I met with the town manager, the mayor, and two board members from Cape Carter. And they informed us of their upcoming decision regarding the SRO for White Oak Elementary. At this meeting, we offered several generous options that the county would negotiate and or provide to keep the, keep the Cape Carter SRO in place. We have asked Emerald Isle if they would be willing to provide an SRO. We offered other avenues of support in keeping the existing SRO. Unfortunately, even though the Cape Carteret Town Manager presented these options to the city council, they decided not to accept these options. And decided to remove their support within their budget. One comment made at this meeting was that Carteret County Board of Commissioners would rather brag about the county's low tax rate than provide a deputy at White Oak. Well, I'll tell you, um, I'm damn proud that this board, uh, keeps low, this county's taxes vary a lot. That's, we keep the money that our tax, that our citizens have where it belongs, and that's in their own pockets. That's one of the reasons why we're elected. Members of this board and I uphold the conservative principles of the political party that we represent, but at the same time providing the outstanding services that the people of Carteret County want and need. Like other towns, Cape Carter already receives money to support a city police officer as the SRO. Cape Carter receives around fifty-seven thousand dollars from Carteret County, from the state, and from surrounding towns to help keep the children at White Oak Elementary safe by providing the SRO. Cape Carter gets the officer during the rest of the year, during summer months, during school holidays, all for a cost to them of around twenty thousand dollars. This is clearly not about money. This isn't about liability either. The SRO that Cape Carter provides is just as much of potential liability to the town whether the officer is at the school or out on patrol. I've received multiple calls from concerned parents about this issue. They do not want to leave the children at White Oak unprotected at their school. At the town's board meeting, at the town's meeting, a board member stated that the town and Cape Carter need to draw the line with the county. This is, this is an indication to me that this is more of a political game. I urge all parents and guardians who have children at White Oak Elementary to reach out to the government officials in Cape Carteret. I urge you and all concerned citizens to show up at their meetings to protest this callous decision before their budget voted on and they removed the SRO who was protecting the children at White Oak Elementary. I urge you to let these officials know that using the safety of our children as a political pawn in some type of game is irresponsible, is careless, and is reckless. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sir? Mr. Chalwick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we'd like to again, uh, offer our condolences to, uh, Dave Fowler's family, Ms. Wanda, and, uh, I too some more, support, uh, Commissioner Quinn and, uh, hoping the town of Cape Carter and the councilman there will see the light and, uh, continue to provide that service. They're just, uh, shirking their responsibility as town board members if they want to give up their school resource officer. That's, uh, you know, the, the police and the sheriff's office, they protect our most precious asset, which is our children. And, uh, for any board member to spearhead this effort is in total incompetence, in my opinion. So hopefully, uh, the citizens will, voice will be heard and, uh, Cape Carter will change their mind. They're just trying to pass the buck to the county. With that, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Easter and thank everyone for coming out tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Commissioner Chalwick. Commissioner Wheatley?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'll keep in mind with Mark Short, I want to congratulate the three new oncoming commissioners who are sitting in the back row. Uh, Kymer and, uh, Keith, those won their elections, and you were fortunate enough when you didn't have to. Anyway, I want to congratulate y'all. We're gonna be here another six or seven months, and I wanted to let, let you know that I'll be glad to help you in any way I can, anytime that I can. And, uh, it's a, it, it, it's a, it's a full-time job, but I'm sure, I'm sure that all of y'all will be able to handle it very well. And I wanted to say that, uh, I support what, uh, Mr. Chen just said about the, uh, Cape Carter SRO, to pull those, to pull that SRO out of that school is just inexcusable to me. And to put it on, put it on the county after y'all heard the situation that we have in the county now as far as uh, money goes and then drop this on us too, I mean, you know, you, you, I heard Robert Comer say one time, if you're gonna be a town, be a town. Do, do, do what you're supposed to do, do your job. And, uh, if they don't want to do the job, they need to quit, go, let somebody else do it. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. I want to wish everybody a happy Easter first, before I forget that. And also, uh, definitely want to remember, um, Dave Fowler and, uh, his wife, Wanda. I've known them for quite a long time in different capacities, uh, uh, and, uh, just want to send our thoughts and prayers to their family. Want to congratulate Sandy, Martine, Heather Dagel, thank you so much. You've helped me in some situations and I appreciate it. And you have taken on a big role and we thank you for all you've done. And Jeannie, um, Beaman as well. Commissioner Wheatley just mentioned, uh, our Commissioner Lex, uh, I, I've, I chime in to agree with him. All the commissioners will help you in any way. Congratulations to Chimer Clark. Uh, Mary Ann Waldra, who's a Carolina fan, by the way, so everybody knows that. And, and Mr. Keith Moore, uh, when I ran, I was very fortunate my first year to, to go on. When I ran, I was very fortunate my first year to go unopposed. And I, I think I attended all the meetings, so technically I've been hanging around this place for already twelve years. Seems like, seems like fifty. But, but congratulations to you and I echo what Commissioner Wheatley said. I also echo what Commissioner Quinn said and what Commissioner Wheatley just said about Cape Carteret. You know, we're, we're in no, no situation right now where we can, we can make up that spot. I'm sure if we had to, we would, but it'd be nice to keep things just like they are. In reference to the sheriff, I, I want to make it fully 100% clear that I think that Sheriff Ace Abuck is the best sheriff in the whole state of North Carolina. I think he's been conservative. I think he has saved this county money, a lot of money. I, I, I didn't vote tonight because I want to think this thing out. We've got to come up with a strategy. I mean, we, we, we need to let these towns know and I, and, 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 you know, we could say we let them know. You know, we could say they, they see it, they see what we're doing, but the towns are focused. When I say towns, I'm talking about towns like the Beach towns, Morehead City, Beaufort, where their, where their population just explodes, you know. We're only seventy-something thousand people in the county, which I challenge that. I see a bunch of new faces in the county. Seems like it's a little off, but, you know, they, their, their population influxes, so does this county. Everybody goes to that jail. These, these towns don't have their own jail blocks. So we've got to do something, something different. I'll even go as far as saying that Morehead City, of course, that news break just came out the other night, and it's shocking what Morehead City did. Shocking. I, I don't, I mean, I think it's shocking. But we just looked at, we just looked at their, their, their pie chart and there's, out of 140 employees on the pie chart, it said 120 were in, were in
Public safety.
Public safety. Their, their public safety for their fire department or fire and EMS went up even higher than their police department did. And I commend them. If they can afford to do that, I commend them for doing it. But we've got to come up with a strategy that works. And what we've been doing hasn't worked. And I'm not saying, sorry? And, 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 you know, 12%, 10%, whatever that strategy is, is, is fine. But I'm going to jump out there and say that we, in my mind, what he said tonight, if it's been accumulated. Once you make this decision also, it ain't like you just take that money out of fund downs. This is forever money. This is going to go on forever. We, we, we don't know right now what we're going to give as a COLA raise or we've implemented a merit raise. We don't know those numbers yet. They could be up to, you know, they could be, we don't know. We don't know what they could be at this moment. So we've got to focus in on getting people in these positions. It's been year after year that we've had budgeted for full employment and, and in the county and in the, and obviously in his department. We've been way under because he's had money left over. I challenged the board to look at that and, you know, I need to study it, but I'm going to say it tonight. I challenged the board to look at how many years we have done that because it did go back into the fund downs. Like Commissioner Mansfield said, don't argue with me.
He won't.
Like he said, that money's spent and gone. It, it, I mean, it's been shuffled around or whatever it has, but we've got to start looking at that. Because the main thing is, is you got to fill those positions. One thing about this county that I'm so proud of, and I've seen it in, in several different places. When we have a hurricane, it started when we had COVID. This county, there is people in this county that work for Carteret that wear multiple hats. They work in one department and do several different things. You can't do that as a deputy. You can't do that as a jailer. You can't do that as a teacher. I mean, you, you, we've got to look at, we've got to look at the whole picture. So I think we just need to take a breath and just look at it and not, not, not drag it out. But we need to, we need to make sure we do that. That's, that's my statement for the night and I love Ace Abuck. I'll say that right now. So I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. I just want to mention that we are going into closed session. I'll announce that in a minute, but we, 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 I didn't want to make an announcement that I forgot to make at the beginning of the meeting that we could come back out of open session and take board action after our discussions are over with. So can I have a motion to?
I should have gone to closed session.
All right. And we are now in closed session.
We got everybody here?
Yep.
We're back in open session. And would somebody make the motion? As we discussed.
Need to state the...
We have the motion to hire Ms. Griffin as the interim county attorney.
And to give the...
At rate...
2.25.
2.25. At a rate of 2.25 per hour. Second.
Okay. I didn't... Did you hear that? Okay. All right.
Chris seconded it.
Chris seconded it.
Did I state that well enough?
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. And now I'll ask for a motion to go out of open session.
So I'm going to turn?
I should turn.
Turn.
I got one question. Aisha was talking about the training for the detention folks. He's got to send them off for four months or whatever.
We're off.
If the community college is doing the bill...